Hey Holly, it looks like we have a quorum, I believe.
Okay, I am ready when you are.
All right, we'll begin the meeting. It's Tuesday, November 10th of 2020. This is the city council meeting and the first order of business would be the roll call.
Borisma?
Here.
Caravelo?
Here.
Do?
Here.
Hi. Other person highly?
There he is.
Oh, I think he just arrived. Hertz?
Here.
Hunt?
Here.
Jensen?
Here.
Lagaki?
Here.
Mieski?
Here.
Reeves?
Here.
Do Mocker? Tukal?
Here.
And then I think I saw all the person highly pop up, but I didn't get him for the roll call.
Yes, I'm here. I think I came in just as you were calling my name.
Okay, sounds good. There are twelve others present.
Excellent. Thank you, Holly. Are there any communications from council members this evening?
If I could, your honor.
Sure.
I just wanted to give a big shout out to Holly and her staff and all of the volunteers that worked the polls this past Tuesday. It's amazing. Their dedication resulted in a 93% turnout. I think that they deserve a huge applause, a huge thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other communications?
I do have one, your honor.
Sure, go ahead.
That is tomorrow is Veterans Day and I think we should all stand in applauding the veterans for what they've done for our country. And I sure appreciate fellow veterans in our community and elsewhere. My father was a blinded veteran of the Sackrel War, making this day incredibly important, Holly, for me. So I just wanted to acknowledge Veterans Day and pass it on to the city and surrounds.
Okay, and thank you. Does anybody else have any communications?
I do. January 9th of 2021 and actually January 9th of for many years coming forward is going to be Law Enforcement Awareness Day. And I just wanted to make Appreciation Day and I just wanted to make council members aware that this date is in the near future in January. And just give it all of our many challenging times. I definitely appreciate law enforcement and I think that that day in January would be a great opportunity for us to send a message or proclamation. Just wanted to plant a seed.
Okay, thank you. Are there any other communications? I have, go ahead.
We, I wanted to make sure this was out in the general public that Public Works was said they're able to find a pretty good fix, a pretty cheap fix as well for the pedestrian bridge on Jefferson Street. And that that's pending the repair and the and the inspection, of course, but it was good news and I'm not sure if that got out to the general public, but I know there have been quite a few people interested in the status of that bridge.
Thank you, all the person highly. Any other communications? And I'll have one that'll add. I was informed today that we're going to be receiving an award from the Department of Revenue for the 2020 VIDA TCE site award. And VIDA is a volunteer organization that helps people with their personal income taxes. And this year, on kind of a last minute notice, Cindy McGlynn was able to secure a location in the senior center to be able to help people from throughout Wisconsin really help process their property or their income taxes. And we have made arrangements to continue that program in Stoughton next year and we're planning on doing it at the fire station. We've been working with Chief Rip on the site and some storage for their equipment. So really excited to be able to welcome by the back, which hopefully will be, you know, a long-term situation. You'll hear more about that as we get closer to tax time. All right, we have an election update from our clerk. And when you're ready, go ahead, Holly. I'll put your stats up here.
Oh, good. So the stats are in your packet. I'm sure you've all had a chance to look at that. But one thing to note, say, the participation was 1,120 voters more than it was in 2016. So participation was way up in the city all around. You can see that 70% of voters voted by absentee ballot, whether that be by mail or in-person at City Hall. We didn't have, we always, I just threw this in here because I've gotten some questions about how many absentee ballots were not returned. 187 were not returned, but that's not abnormal. There's always going to be, you know, 100 to 300 or so ballots that are not returned. And I do would say that a lot of those ballots that were not returned, the voters ended up coming and voting in person at the polls. So that information on participation is in your packet as well. Then the link here would get you candidate-specific results by precinct if you were interested in looking at that at that. I also just wanted to take this opportunity to thank everyone that that was involved in the election. By no means was this just my staff and I, but 79 poll workers actually worked the polls on Election Day and the days and weeks leading up to it. Some worked, came in and worked nights helping sort absentee ballots. Some gave up their Saturdays and Sundays to come help with voting and preparing. So a big thanks to all those people and I think it's important that we do recognize these members of our community. About one-third of the poll workers that worked in November were new. So we had, you know, some training and things to do, but everyone rose to the occasion. We had pretty much no issues at all on Election Day. Everyone was great. So I just wanted to go ahead and read the names of all of our poll workers in appreciation of them. I think it's important that the council and the community knows, you know, who is there and who volunteered their time to help that day and the days leading up to that. So I will try to be as quick as possible, but there are 79 names here, so bear with me. Bob Barnett, Ben Fisher, Ed Brennan, Jeff Cunningham, Jim McNulty, Jane Endress, Bridget Boucher, Nathan Gates, Jennifer LaPorte, Linda Swansdo, Dave Erdman, Mike Senate, Jenny Baseman, Ernie Strassner, Joyce Caping, Donna Fogle, David Strassner, Amelia Reinerson, Heidi Hadron Clark, Michelle Bolstad, Erin Tech, Bud Erickson, Kristy Falker, Wanda Kennison, Henry Duttili, Kathy Duttili, Anne Starr, Holly Tangeman, Abby Brown, Colby Smith, Denise Wilson, Laura Stokes, Jody McCoy, Mariah Wooster Lehman, Lyndale, Eric Wolf, Aaron Radecki, Janice Gibbou, Sue Stranley, Marty Lemers, Ross Horton, Donna Olson, Kathy Rigged, Diane Walsh, Donlin, Angela Mastino, Madison Basie, Catherine Christman, Howard Barrigan, Tony Ketterer, Steve Horton, Abby Ketterer, Jill Izidor, Debbie Nisco, Deb Piper, Amir Estillo, Christine Belland, Albert Henistro, Lisa Clark, Ruth Courtney, Sean Steak, Nancy Salisbury, Laura Carpenter, Emily Thompson, Bob Stucksholkey, Margaret Flackton, Alyssa Carr, Bob McEver, Sharon Fulbright, Corinne McEver, Lisa Olson, Jean Burt, Jeff Bird, Jeff Creeter, Jeffrey Wingert, Joe Patterson, Ray Carr, Pam Griggs and Mike Dickrey. So all in all, 79 people on top of my staff as well. So Judy Krabs, Lydia Moore and Candy Christian all put in a tremendous amount of work to make it a successful election day.
Okay, thank you, Holly. The minutes and reports are in the packet. And the next item on the agenda is public comment and I have quite a few. Most of them I'll read. There's a couple of people that would like to speak for themselves, so I'll let you know when it's your turn. The first one is from David Erdman and he just wants to give kudos and a huge thank you to the city clerk. Holly Litt for organizing and running the city's successful general election that occurred on Tuesday, November 3rd. I've been a poll worker for many years and the organization and implementation of this year's election was one of the best I've ever experienced. Even with the many court pandemic and other challenges. Thanks, city clerk Litt. The next one is from Sharon Mason Borisma and this one is regarding a budget item. Affordable transportation. The Stoughton Affordable Transportation Program has been a nonprofit 501(c)(3) organization that was created nine years ago as a response to the increasing transportation challenges faced by low-income community members. There was a need to make trips to Madison, Wisconsin and locations outside of Stoughton to meet medical, legal and social service and employment needs and responsibilities. To meet transportation challenges for those living in the Stoughton School District, ATP was created to provide free affordable service to those in need. The need for the affordable transportation to the locations within and outside of Stoughton exists because no public transportation or other than a taxi service or a rideshare transit exists, which is not affordable for some and others who do not qualify for this service. The taxi service option is also limited to those that need transportation to Madison as it only provides rides up to four miles outside the city of Stoughton. ATP employs one staff person to coordinate requested rides and then seven volunteer drivers to assist the requested rides for those needing transportation. All the volunteer drivers receive background checks, medical authorization to provide this role and are screened for adequate automobile insurance. Routinely, the ATP volunteer drivers provide a consistent, reliable and affordable means of transportation for persons at or near the federally defined poverty level that enables them to keep appointments and secure life necessities locally in Stoughton, Madison and other communities nearby. This service provides increased stabilization for those individuals and families facing challenges with medical, housing, employment, legal issues to obtain basic needs and items from the food and personally essential patries. Requests for referrals are made from the two local food pantry organizations, social workers for start, Stoughton Senior Center joining forces for families, Stoughton Hospital, Stoughton Police Department, Stoughton School District, as well as self-referrals for those in need of transportation. I'm asking you as leaders in the community to consider assisting ATP for financial support for continuing to provide the safe, reliable transportation program in our community to help towards stabilization. Those representing ATP are requesting $1,000 to be allotted from the budget of 2021 to help manage the operation and expenses of the Stoughton Affordable Transportation Program. Thank you. Next one is from Jenny Britton and this is regarding the annex lease agreements. And I believe there's a group on here from the annex. Jenny, are you available to speak?
Yeah, I'm here.
All right, the floor is yours.
Awesome. Thank you so much. Well, hello, everybody. I am representing the Stoughton Annex tenants that the city rents to. I'm going to introduce everybody in the room. I don't know if you can see me. I don't see you guys on my screen, but maybe you can. I don't know.
Right?
Yeah, we all have masks on. We do.
Yes, that's good to see. Thanks for doing that. Yep, we do see you.
Okay, perfect. So first of all, from suite number four, we have Brian and Leslie Smith. Brian opened his Stoughton Private Financial Office in 1991. He's lived in Stoughton for over 45 years. He also has a three-quarter time employee that works with him. In suite number three, we have Carla Iverson Zentmeyer. She started cutting hair in Stoughton in 1982 and opened Stoughton Hairstyling in the annex in February of 2004. She currently has two coworkers who rent space from her and she's lived in Stoughton all her life. We don't have a representative from Community Connections tonight. We weren't able to contact them. They don't have a lot of people in and out of there right now. And then the suite number one is Lisa Rush in the corner over there and myself. Lisa has been offering massage services in Stoughton for 12 years. Four of those have been here at the annex. She's lived in Stoughton for 16 years. And then, my name is Jenny Britton. I'm a physical therapist. I've been working, doing that job since 2001. And I opened Blue Wing Physical Therapy here at the annex in 2016. So we, as a group, would like to address the senior center annex rental agreement and potential termination of our leases. A little background, on October 29th of this year, the senior center annex tenants, so everybody in this room received individual letters from Jamin, the Director of Finance for the city. In his letter, he reported that the city council was presented information from the Commission on Aging that they had identified space issues at the senior center and that the current use of the annexed space should be looked at closer for potential expansion of those services. This was at their October 8th meeting. So we would like to respond to the city council and voice our concerns about this proposal. I know it's in the early stages, but it kind of took us all by surprise. So number one, community support. We are all Main Street small businesses. Stoughton encourages new small businesses to move into downtown, which is a good thing because historically we've seen small-town America decline. Small businesses have a hard time keeping their doors open for many reasons. Our businesses have taken on the product, market and financial risks and we've made it work. We would like to continue to provide our services to the people of Stoughton and potentially bring in new clients to town. Number two is the monetary benefits to the city. We generate revenue via rent money for the city of Stoughton. The proposed 2020 budget amount to be received from the annexed tenants is $29,700. While we realize it's a small amount compared to the extent of the city budget, it is still money that goes into the general fund for the city to use at its discretion. We also pay our own utilities and historically the annex was built and designed to provide the city with income. Number three is durability. COVID-19 has affected our businesses. Stoughton Hairstyling and Lisa's Massage Therapy Services were required to shut down in the months of March, April and May. We've all made changes in our business models to accommodate public health safety precautions. Currently, the senior center is closed to the public indefinitely for in-person activities, according to their website. There's no way to predict how the pandemic will affect any of us to go back to normal life. Our businesses are starting to see improved numbers again, which is a relief. However, Carlo from Stoughton Hairstyling predicts that her business would dissolve if she had to move due to the cost of relocating and potential loss of her coworkers. And Lisa has personal experience with losing clients after her business moved and that was just from one end of Stoughton to the other one. The last one is number four, commitment. Our businesses have displayed longevity. While Lisa and I have been in business for four years, Carlo's been in business for 15 plus and Brian is coming up on 30 years here in this annex. Well-established business in the annex speaks well of the relationship with the city and the acumen of the business owners. We appreciate the affordable rent and partnership with the city. So in conclusion, we'd like our businesses to stay where they are. We invite you to come down to visit us and see the spaces that we've created for the people of Stoughton. Thanks for listening and for your consideration of our concerns. That's what I've got. I don't know if you guys have any questions about anything. I don't know how this works.
Yeah, during public comment, we're really not in a position to engage in a dialogue, but I anticipate this will be on as a future agenda item.
Okay, all right.
Thank you for sharing that.
You're welcome. Jamin has all our information too.
All right. The next email that I'm going to read is from Brady Troller. And Brady says, this is regarding the Whitewater Park. Please do not listen to the assortment of NIMBYs, most of them don't even live in your jurisdiction, that email you over this issue. This would be a huge boon for the city and revitalize the dilapidated area. These are the kind of projects that Stoughton needs to ensure continued growth in the future. The wannabe environmental scientists are trying to protect their own property investments and not looking out what's good for the community as a whole. Thank you, Brady Troller. Next one up is Al Waller and I believe Al's on the line and he wanted to speak.
Thank you for inviting me. My name is Al Waller. I'm an entrepreneur and I started my first lawn care and shoveling business when I was eight years old. I've started over 20 businesses in my life. Fortunately, some have succeeded and some have not. I am currently the president of Speed Solar in Deerfield, president of A&amp;L Marketing Enterprises in Stoughton and the executive director of a nonprofit we recently started called Spirit Lifters of a Light. I have some concerns about the proposed Whitewater Park and would like to learn the answers to the following questions. Has the city done a business plan projecting the economic growth for this Whitewater Park? What is the marketing plan? What are your projections for its usage? How many people per day, per week, per month? Have you researched other similar Whitewater Parks to see how they generate revenue? Have you budgeted increased liability insurance? One kid tips over, hits their head on a rock and drowns. Not good for PR. You plan on improving the water quality? The farm fertilizers create green algae. They clump up and they look like floating turds. If you swallow the green water, you will most likely get dysentery. I am proposing we change the name from Whitewater Park to the Pea Soup Park. Usage is only three months, June, July and August. Nine months of city idol, Wisconsin Dell seasonal problem. Is the city prepared to defend a class action lawsuit when all the people who are now paying additional taxes for waterfront property suddenly have marshfront property? In my opinion, need to have at least 51% of the entire city vote to pass this Whitewater Park proposal. If you are responsible for spending our tax dollars on projects that benefit as many people as possible, you might consider the following. Even if you raise all the upfront money with grants, the maintenance and public perception will still blame city government for flushing their tax dollars down the water park drain. I'd like to propose a more green and sustainable plan to promote the city of Stoughton's water assets. Green environmentally and green financially. Have you ever visited the San Antonio River Walk and been on one of their boat rides? How about the Wisconsin Dells Boat Rides, the Ducks, Upper and Lower Dells? How about Betty Lou Cruises on Lake Monona? The idea is to offer Stoughton solar boat rides. I have converted a pontoon boat into a fully electric, zero emissions boat that can be 100% powered by solar energy. It is perfect for sustainable Stoughton. I have been giving rides up and down the river and plan on taking out my solar boat on Thursday afternoon. If you would like a test ride with me on the solar boat, please contact me at 608-354-6370 or email me at alwaller228@gmail.com. I am available either Wednesday or Thursday afternoon and will only take about 30 minutes of your time. The marketing plan is to promote Stoughton as a clean renewable city. The boats would be docked at the senior center. Senior volunteers would pilot the boats. They could even make it fun like the Jungle Cruise at Disney. All proceeds would go to the nonprofit senior center. Solar boat rides would start in April and end in November, utilizing eight of the 12 months of our water assets. This is a feel-good story that would attract visitors for miles. It ties into our Norwegian theme, Sentnam Eye and the Heritage Center. We could even have trolls under the bridges. Buses of seniors could take a solar boat ride as they visit the Heritage Center. The solar boat rides are safe for infants to seniors, which maximizes the demographic reach. If you study renewable energy in Norway, 99% of all their electricity comes from clean renewable energy. They have more electric vehicles per capita than any other country. I think Stoughton needs to take a lead in clean renewable energy and look for alternatives to the Whitewater Pea Soup Park. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. The next email is from Sharon Mason Borisma. And this is regarding the Whitewater Park. I'm writing to you to pass on an amendment at meeting tonight to remove the 2021 budget, the CIP funds allocated for the Whitewater Trails Engineering, Whitewater Dam Removal and Restoration and Remediation and Project Engineering. This is a total of $275,339. Capital projects over $75,000 were outlined and printed in the November 5th, 2020 edition of the Hub. Also on October 22nd, 2020, another article appeared on the front page of the Hub for the opposition by the supervisors and the planning commission members of the Town of Pleasant Springs who passed a resolution signed on 9/1/2020 opposing removal of the Stoughton Dam and decrying a lack of say in the city Stoughton's decision process. City Stoughton leaders and administrators, do you hear what is happening here? It appears continuing plans are in the forefront for Stoughton Dam removal and Whitewater Park build by using taxpayers' dollars for expenses to the tune of almost $300,000. In October of 2020, over 500 names were on a petition that was submitted to Mayor Swadley in opposition for dam removal in the Whitewater Park build. Additionally, people came to the virtual city council meeting to voice our opposition by citing many valid reasons of concern, contamination risk in the Yhara River if the dam removal took place, possible adverse impact on property values, water level concerns, the risk of livelihood to waterfowl inhabitants and vegetation and the changing the peaceful Yhara River aura and traditions to a six-month amusement park. What are the safety risks in city services expenses for this to happen and how much revenue would this bring into the city? More importantly, what is the short-term and long-term benefits envisioned if this were to happen? Does it equal almost $300,000 to be spent from tax dollars? Especially when we're all being hit hard right now by the COVID pandemic and its impact on schools, businesses, residents of all communities at the present and in the future. Please listen to those around you, the city of Stoughton, and move forward by planning the town hall meeting together to involve city leaders in three townships to address these questions and issues. Voices need to be heard, questions need to be answered and vision needs to be addressed. Take seriously those who have submitted letters to be read at city council meetings, petitions that have been signed by many and those that are voicing their opinions tonight and prior to this meeting. Avoid being labeled as not being transparent and authentic to the public and others. We're all in this together and we want leaders we have voted for to make decisions and practice due diligence for everyone they represent in the city of Stoughton and surrounding townships. Trust develops when doing the right thing is the primary focus. Thank you. The next one is from Mark Hale. And Mark, I think you're on here. Do you want me to read them or do you want to go ahead?
I could read it. Thanks, Mayor. I wasn't sure if I was going to be able to make it because of other meetings, but.
No, that's fine. They're probably tired of listening to me by now anyway.
Okay, thank you. Mayor Swadley, city council members. First of all, I'd like to thank all that participated in the development of this capital improvement plan. It is not missed by me that substantial time, study and meeting time has set the table for this plan. Thank you to the council members for the participation and oversight as well. You have heard from petitioners, speakers in council meetings and committee meetings and other community representatives about the substantial concerns as well as opposition to the dam removal and water park. Rather than specifically address the items for dam removal engineering, 2021 and 2022, dam removal construction 2022, river restoration 2021 and 2022. Let me just submit that these items included in this plan sends a message to the community that you don't care what valid issues the opposition has raised. Sometimes it is not what is in budgets, but what is not included that raises eyebrows of community members. Let me focus on what is missing. There's no evidence of environmental impact studies, whether you feel you don't need to do them or not. There's no evidence of detailed or expanded hydrology studies since we apparently don't know what the Dane County office will be providing. There's no evidence of funds set aside if additional risers would maintain the water level upstream. There's no evidence of funding for any other studies to look at alternatives to dam removal by the city or in concert with surrounding townships. So the shortlist leaves the impression that you're determined to have the train leave the station, so to speak. No matter the point, there is significant community and township opposition. I ask you to set aside funds for these areas and give evidence by doing so that you really are fulfilling your oath of impartiality during this period of passionate debate. Thanks for the opportunity to present these comments. Have a good night.
Thanks, Mark. And the next is Judy Bills. And at this time, I'm opposed to allocating any funds for dam removal and whitewater kayaking park engineering and construction. I did not. I do not want to disturb and polluted muddy river bottom because of our neighbor south of us, and I do not want to threaten the bodies of water that our neighbors to the north of us enjoy. I'm wondering why, even though many of our fellow citizens have come to the meetings and they're express their opposition to this project, hundreds and hundreds of thousands of dollars are allocated for this project in the budget. I feel I've witnessed other instances of the council not responding to the public's concerns. The majority of the people that need to be heard in the matter of the dam removal before you move forward. Thank you for listening and paying heed to my comments. The next one is from Edward Schultz. Today, November tenth, was the first eagle sighting day of the fall-winter season. It grabbed a fish near the shore of the end of the Yhara Road. The presence of this top predator and the others who will come later in the season is a clear indicator that the Yhara Bay ecosystem is a healthy and supportive resource. In midsummer, the ospreys dive for food to feed their young. They are here because the bay supports an excellent population of fish ranging from panfish to northern pike and bass. During the waterfall migration season, the bay is an important stopover for ducks, geese, pelicans, swans that create constant activity monitored by daily numerous bird watchers. Over the course of the year, the Yhara Bay is used by thousands of local residents and scores from neighboring communities to engage in a wide range of activities such as boating, canoeing, kayaking, fishing, and hunting. They utilize the resource because of its unique beauty and diversity provides fulfillment to the many interests in so many ways. There's nothing like it for miles. Removing the dam for the water park will seriously alter the upstream river. Although your consultants feel the water levels will not change, they offer no hard data specific to this watershed to support their conclusions. Over the past twenty years, I've noted that small fluctuations in the water flow levels at the dam have resulted in large fluctuations in the Yhara Bay. Before any decisions are made, please inform and gather input from the people of Pleasant Springs. Do you not feel you have an obligation to consider more fully exactly what changes will take place upstream of Stoughton? At the very least, why not lower the river to the market will be at the function of the water park? So the residents and the council will see exactly what the impact will be on Yhara Bay. Will it retain its beauty and become a mud flat? Is there a way to construct the water park without impacting the upstream river? It would be very premature to allocate any additional taxpayer funds in the two thousand twenty-one budget for dam removal and water park construction without gathering appropriate input from upstream residents and carrying out studies specifically showing the impact on upstream water levels and habitat. After all, Yhara Bay has been a landmark here a hundred years, and every effort should be taken to maintain all that it offers. The next one, I believe this is the last one, is Catherine Foster. I would like to thank council members Borzma, Takowski, Caravelle, Reeves, Haley, and Hunt for taking the time to tour the Mill Pond area with me. It is my hope that every alder will accept my invitation during the last nice fall days. Touring this area, both public and private properties will give you a better sense of the questions and concerns of those who love the river, Mill Pond, and Bay. It would be irresponsible to make important decisions on the future of the dam and proposed Whitewater Park without visiting the actual site. You need to see what current users of this area experience and what will be lost if the dam is removed and replaced with a project most people don't want. Can you in good conscience make a irreversible decision that will change Stoughton forever based on a watercolor rendering and information only from a biased source? The community relies on you to be good stewards of all tax revenues, assets, and natural resources, including those connecting the neighboring townships. I look forward to meeting several more of you in the near future. Thank you, Catherine Foster. And those are all the public comments for tonight. The first item of business is the consent agenda, and I would entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So move. Second.
Motion by Haley and a second by Reeves. Would anybody like anything removed from the consent agenda enacted on separately? And hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
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 And any opposed? None opposed. That motion carries. Ordinance twenty-two of two thousand twenty is the second reading coming from the utilities. And this would be Alder Person Jensen.
Thank you, Your Honor. This is ordinance twenty-two, two thousand twenty, to amend section seventy-four dash fifteen, parent A, and seventy-four dash fifteen, and creating sections seventy-four dash fifteen, parent C through parent E of the city of Stoughton Code of Ordinances relating to the place water metering facilities and replacement of inaccessible metering facilities. I'd move for approval.
Second.
Second. Sucked by Alder Person Reeves. Alder Person Jensen.
Yes, utilities recommended approval, a seven-zero vote. And I would let Jill, I think she is here, I'll let Jill comment on it if there are any questions.
Thank you. I guess just the purpose of this ordinance ultimately is to get meter configurations that are not, say, code compliant today, code compliant when we have the opportunity to do so, and we recognize that opportunity with if we are able to get the lead grant for service line replacements, that would be an excellent opportunity to be able to address the meter locations as well.
All right, any questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
And any opposed? That motion carries. Ordinance twenty-three of two thousand twenty is also a second reading from utilities. Alder Person Jensen.
Thank you, Your Honor. Ordinance twenty-three, two thousand twenty, to amend section seventy-four dash two, parent A, and seventy-four dash two, parent B, to create section seventy-four two G of the city of Stoughton Code of Ordinances relating to the replacement of indirect service lateral connections. And I would move for approval.
Second.
Sucked by Alder Person Reeves. Alder Person Jensen.
Yes, this is recommended by the Utilities Committee on a seven-zero vote, and I would ask Jill to comment if she would, please.
Thank you. I did want to note that in the first reading and what actually got recommended by the committee was also to address the sewer laterals as well as water services. Because we had situations where we have a single, whether it's a water service or sewer lateral that is servicing multiple properties. We recognized between, say, first and second reading that there is some additional things we need to address on the sewer side. So pulled that off of the ordinance and is taking that back to committee. But do recommend that we move forward with the water services. I think it was requested or asked the last time, how many properties we think this affects? I still, just in going through and looking at the maps, about twenty to thirty. There's probably more out there we don't know of, but it's a situation where we've got a single service sized for a single residence, a single property, and it's actually servicing multiple properties. The challenge there, besides the sizing, is if we need to shut off that service or if there's a water leak, it impacts all of those properties, which we don't want that to be the case. And it's also, again, is something we wanted to have addressed as an ordinance prior to the lead service line replacement.
Director Reeves, do you need us to do an amendment then, or were we going to bring this back to utilities? Do you want us to table it, bring it back to utilities or what?
What we did was I worked with the city attorney and we actually took the second. There's actually two new sections, G and H, and we just removed H and left G in place. G is on the water side, H is on the sewer side, and just remove that from the ordinance itself is what's proposed and taking that back to committee.
So because that was not in the first reading, don't we, I believe that we need an amendment to add that then? Would the attorney please?
Yeah. Yeah, the clarification is that the ordinance that's in front of you tonight is actually has been revised to exclude the sewer component and deals only with the water component. So what is before you tonight is the same that was before you on the first reading, except that it now excludes the sewer piece. So the recommendation, at least from utility, from Ms. Weiss, and I would concur, is that the council can go ahead and adopt this ordinance, which will deal with the water side. There's no need to amend it because the language has already been revised. And then Jill plans to ask the committee to review and work with her on the sewer side to address some additional issues.
Okay.
I have a question for Matt, and that is because there are no additions and only subtractions, that's why we can act on it in this manner? Is that correct?
That's my view. You've already, yeah, there's nothing new here. There's no additional language, there's nothing more. There's just taking a piece of it that was in what was before you on the first reading, taking that out so it can go back to committee. We decided to do that and just give you a different ordinance tonight rather than ask you to try and amend the ordinance on the floor.
Then one further question, if I could, Matt. And that would be then, when it comes back on the other side, you know, of the issue, do we need a new ordinance then?
There will be, yes.
Totally separately.
Yes, that will be a new ordinance, and that will go through a first and second reading.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
And I might say, I think that makes sense, so.
Yeah. That was a nice clarification, Alder Person Borzma. Any other questions or comments? Okay, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
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 And any opposed?
I've stayed.
That motion carries. One abstention?
Yep.
Okay, one abstention. All right, so that motion does carry. I think we're gonna jump ahead and then come back to the budget at the end here. So there's people waiting for some of these other items. So I think we'll just go through them quick. So we'll go right to item number item number eleven.
Public hearing first?
Well, I want to approve some of these other items so people that aren't here for the hearing can leave. So we'll jump down to R one sixty-nine of two thousand twenty, and this is coming from the Finance Committee. Alder Person Schumacher.
All right, R one sixty-nine, two thousand twenty, a resolution setting the special charge for garbage and recycling collection fees for calendar year two thousand twenty-one. So moved.
Second. Second.
Second here.
Second by Alder Person Jensen, Alder Person Schumacher.
All right, this is, we work on this one annually. The rate increase was going to be about three point two percent, so from a hundred seventy-four dollars to a hundred eighty dollars per household. This also adds in a fifty cent per month per household charge for the curbside collection of electronic wastes as well.
And are there any questions or comments on this one?
Yeah, Brett, do you know what the jump was from last year? I mean.
How, what the percentage was from nineteen to twenty?
Yep.
Offhand, I do not know what that was, but I I don't even want to venture a guess in there as it'll probably not be, I won't be right on that one. But I think it was in line, close to what we have for this year as well.
Okay.
I think we're still under contract and what we're trying to do is expand the curbside pickup for the e-waste.
Oh, Jamin.
Mayor, this is.
Five point seven last year in the chat.
Okay.
Thanks, Jamin.
Do we anticipate the company to put out some communications about the e-waste program?
Yeah, we do as we get closer to the first of the year. That's when it's going to take effect, you know, subject to this approval. It'll be much like when they did, when they did the bulk pickup. It's going to be similar communication as that.
Thank you.
Sure. Any other questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
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 And any opposed? And that motion carries. And the next item is R one seventy of two thousand twenty. This also comes from Finance. Alder Person Schumacher.
R one seventy, two thousand twenty, to authorize a small claims lawsuits against Budmar LLP and B and B Investment Company LLP regarding unpaid annexation agreement, town tax reimbursements. So moved.
Okay.
I think I heard a second.
That was me.
Okay, Alder Person Schumacher.
All right, so this is to go after fifty-three hundred and forty-four dollars of taxes owed to the city from properties that were annexed in from the town of Rutland and have become delinquent. We did the same thing last year and were able to get some of those monies. And I think, I believe, this is the final year that we would have to pursue this.
Any questions or comments on this one?
Yeah, Brett, do we know how much it's gonna cost us for our lawyers to go after this type of money? I mean, is it gonna be a wash after this, or we actually gonna gain from this?
Matt, I am not certain about what the legal fee would be to cover that.
I think it'll be less that we're going to small claims court, but maybe Attorney Drake, can you give us more insight on that?
Well, I haven't discussed this specific lawsuit with anyone recently. I know I had a discussion with someone in the Finance Department about this some time ago, and I think one part of that discussion was that you don't actually have to have a lawyer representing you in small claims court. You can have a non-lawyer, so I don't know whether the plan is here to have, you know, me or someone from my office actually handle this or whether you're gonna handle this in-house. I'm not sure what the plan is.
Brett, or Jamin, do we have a plan? I mean, I would just say to us to go to a small claims court and pay our lawyers five thousand dollars only to get three hundred and forty-four dollars back.
Yeah, we we're not sure what direction this is gonna go. Similar to last year, we had this passed. This was kind of the poke and prod that we needed to collect the money. We never actually had to go to small claims court. I imagine if this doesn't prompt a payment, we'll continue to try to collect internally before we go down the small claims route. If we think we need to do that, we'll revisit this and look at the costs separately and more than likely bring it back through finance and council at that point.
Okay, thank you.
We really don't want to do this, but we do need the permission to start sending notices to this individual.
No, I get it.
Any other questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
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 Any opposed? None opposed. That motion carries. All right, the next four are coming from Public Safety. Alder Person Jensen.
Thank you, Your Honor. Item thirteen is ordinance twenty-five, two thousand twenty. This is, it doesn't state it on the agenda, but this is for first reading. It's amending chapter seventy point one seventy-six of the city of Stoughton Municipal Code by creating subsection parent eighty-two relating to no parking anytime on the west side of Hole Avenue between Odison and Autegard Drive. And Public Safety recommended approval on a five-zero vote October twenty-eighth, two thousand twenty. So briefly, what this is, is it's the newer section on Hole Avenue, right by Highway A. As you come off of A and go north on Hole, it turns to the west, and it has become a bit of a bottleneck with people parking on both sides. And it has become a bit of a bottleneck, uh, with people parking on both sides, uh, and there have been some complaints from. Uh, the residents there, so this was the chief's idea to resolve that issue.
Alright, any questions or comments, or this one will be back at the next meeting. Alright, we'll move on to the next one, Alder Kristen Johnson.
Uh, thank you, Your Honor, Resolution one seventy-one twenty twenty, authorizing and directing the proper city officials to suspend ordinance. Seventy dash one eighty-six downtown to our parking regulations from November thirty, twenty twenty to January first, twenty twenty-one, uh, move for approval.
Second.
Second by Alder Kristen Reeves, Alder Kristen Johnson.
Yes, this is something we did last year to try and promote the downtown business, make things a little bit easier for people and that we felt it was. Successful last year and we thought it would be a good idea to do it this year, especially with the COVID.
Alright, any questions or comments from anyone?
Uh, Greg, did the downtown folks actually come and request this, I'm just curious?
No. Sorry, said, somebody said something.
That, it's me, Greg, I was wondering if the downtown businesses actually requested of this, or if we're just. We're just kind of following through what we did last year.
Just following through, basically, I, it was, it was brought up to me, I can't remember exactly who it was, but it was not somebody from the downtown business area. I, I thought it was a good idea to bring it back, so I did.
Okay, no, it's good, thanks.
Alright, any other questions or comments? Alright, here are none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And any opposed? None opposed, that motion carries. Next item involves snowmobiles, it's hard to believe that it would be snowy when it's been so nice out lately. Alder Kristen Johnson.
Thank you, item fifteen, this is Resolution one seventy-two twenty twenty, approving designated snowmobile routes in the city right away. And Public Safety recommends approval, and I so move.
Second.
Second by Alder Kristen Doom, Alder Kristen Johnson.
Yes, this is something we do every year, uh, Snow Drifters, uh, Snowmobile Club comes to the Public Safety Committee. And uh, they asked for us to approve this. The chief has indicated in a committee meeting that there were no issues and haven't been any issues, uh, and it uh. It adds, adds to the businesses in the area, the routes, so uh, uh, I would recommend approving this.
Your Honor.
Yes, go ahead.
Yeah, I, I want to speak in favor of this and it, uh, the, this group, uh, I've had some contact with them and some dealings with them and they are. Uh, extremely conscientious in terms of trails, uh, not going on trails when they're too light for snow. And I, I, I've just been impressed over the years about how diligent they are to uh, to maintain the uh. Maintain the, maintain the uh. Routes, but also to make them safe, uh, and so there's no, there's not degradation to the, uh, whatever they're riding on, mostly uh, grass. So I, I just wanna strongly uh, uh, say that I'm in favor, favor of this, um, this resolution.
Alright, any other questions?
I was curious to know whether uh, this would, so I don't think there would be an impact on it for, for this snow season, but perhaps the next one. Uh, because this is between BBG's Culvers and Quick Trip with the, with that new multi-unit business that's going in on the corner. If that would have some effect for them, or if they would just be asked and then included on this list for next year.
Uh, that was brought up uh, at the committee meeting and uh, the indication was that there was, would be no problem that the. Owner of that facility, which is yet to be completed, was all in favor of it, and he was looking forward to them. Coming by his business, so it, it's, it looks like it'll be, um, you know, full speed ahead next year.
Perfect, I'm glad that worked out.
Alright, anybody else have questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
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 And any opposed? And that motion carries, um, R one seventy-three, Alder Kristen Johnson.
Okay, one last one, item sixteen, this is our, our Resolution one seventy-three twenty twenty, approving a Class B winery license transfer. From Mershonian Ciderie LLC from one oh eight Business Park Circle, number seven to one twenty-four Main Street, Stoughton, and move for approval.
Second.
Second by Alder Kristen Reeves, Alder Kristen Johnson.
Yes, this is, uh, as everybody knows with the, or the, the, well, or shame. Mershonian Ciderie wants to move from the Business Park to Main Street, which I think is a great, great move for downtown. Didn't see any issues with it, uh, I don't know if the chief wants to speak to it, but I didn't see any issues, nothing was brought up, uh, that would create concern at committee. So I would uh, encourage approval of this.
I, I have a question, Greg, if that would be okay?
Yes, absolutely.
Just, just tell us what one twenty-four Main Street is, please.
Let's see, that is the old theater building.
Okay. I knew it, but I wanted, I wanted people to know that.
And, and what, what they're doing at, at first is, what they're gonna be doing is just have a tasting room. Their, their ciderie uh, production. Uh, part of the business will not be moving in until next year, as I understand it. So uh, this will simply be a, a tasting area. And that's why they needed to move the license.
Any other questions or comments? So just to share a little bit about how this happened, uh, basically, uh, Mershance is out in the Business Park right now in one of the incubator buildings. And when we learned that the movie theater was gonna close, we actually, uh, the realtor and I went out and, and talked to him and. Toured his facility and he was in the process of purchasing another wine facility in another building out there. And we brought him down here and we toured the movie theater and then it kind of took off from there, so. Uh, we're really pleased that we're able to find a, a nice use for the building, that we do expect some other tenants in there as well. Uh, so we're, we're looking forward to having that building, it's one of the larger buildings downtown, uh, having that being, you know, a draw for some of the other businesses that are around it as well. Any other questions or comments? Here are none, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
And any opposed? That motion carries, alright, so that takes us back to the uh, the budget section of the agenda. And before I get started, um, I want to do a few things and kind of set the table here, so we have. Um, three approvals, one for the operating budget, one for the capital improvement, which is also the R C I P budget. And then one for Stoughton Utilities, and I really wanted to thank a few people before we get into this, and first of all. I wanted to thank Director Friedel and his team for putting together the documents and walking us through them at all the extra meetings that we had. Certainly want to thank all the members of the leadership team, um, that did presentations at the various meetings and answered any questions that you might have. The C I P Committee, which is uh, the chairperson from all the standing committees, so that would be Schumacher, Mieski, Johnson, Reeves, Caravelo and Hiley. And then the C I P Committee was chaired by President Hirsch. I'd also like to thank the Utilities Chair, uh, David Erdman. And the community of the whole, which was led by President Hirsch, and then also uh. Alder Kristen Reeves for the work that the Personnel Committee did on the Personnel Request that we had. So I wanted to at least get that in before we get started, and then what I'll do is, I'll just walk you through the budget. Um, much of this you've already seen, um, if you have any questions, I'll be glad to answer them. Jamin is here to back me up if, if you need uh, more specifics. So, basically, this is the twenty twenty-one operating budget, and there's a few things that. And uh, we're planning on having a two. For union and non-union employees subject to completed negotiations with the Police Department. Final decisions on the School Resource Officer, also known as the SRO. Highway CD funds are still pending, uh, we know that the school district. Will not fund any of the SRO position from now until the end of the year, and we're hoping to have a decision in January for, for the next calendar year going forward. The State Highway Funds, we're going back and forth with the DOT right now, they want us to increase. The area that we maintain right now, we take care of Main Street all the way out to Hall Avenue. And we're in the process of extending that out to Robey Road, and with that, there's a formula that they use that. Would pay us for the additional uh, work that we would do out there, we're talking about twenty-five to twenty-eight thousand dollars. So we're hoping that we can uh, complete that agreement with them, and, and the reason they want us to do it is, is anticipation of the roundabouts. That are scheduled in twenty twenty-two, but we're hoping that if we can come to an agreement. Here, they'll actually start paying out that money um, for twenty twenty-one and we'll, we'll start plowing those roads and doing some maintenance out there, uh, beginning next year.
Mayor, I have a quick question, this is Alder Legaki, uh, Alder put out a message, are, are we going to have the public hearing after this summary? Or?
Yeah, yeah, I think we'll do the public hearing afterward, that way. People will have the information and maybe some of the questions they may have will be answered as we go through it, I was gonna mention that earlier. Yeah, thanks for bringing that up. Um, so the, the next part is the. The health insurance is going up two and a half percent, uh, Director Gillingham was able to negotiate that down from what we anticipated. Would be, I believe, at least a six percent increase uh, for next year, so that was a, a nice savings for us. Um, we're gonna utilize um, some levy increases of eighty-nine thousand dollars. Um, utilize twenty-five thousand dollars. Service and fund balance money and special assessments, which will help with our mill rate, and we can walk through that when we get to that slide. And then also, um, if we, if we weren't using these excess debt services, you can see that our mill rate would have increased more than we're anticipating right now. We also have some TIF money that we're anticipating, which will help. And then with the termination of number three, and then we're gonna allocate five hundred and fifty thousand dollars of the excessive money. For the newly created affordable housing program, which we can use for renovations at Greenspire and then a first-time homebuyer program. The next slide kind of focuses on the net new construction, this gives us our history, we grew at one point eight three seven percent, which resulted in an extra a hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars we're able to levy. That was really the second highest since this uh, data is accumulated from the law changes in twenty eleven. And so you can kind of see, you know, the difference between this year and last year, uh, you know, we grew enough to be able to at least fund another position, which you'll hear about shortly. Other, uh, but. We put two hundred thousand dollars towards the revolving loan fund, which is managed by the R D A. Set aside a hundred thousand dollars as contingency because of unknowns due to COVID. Uh, four point two two five million dollars in planned uh, capital improvements, which we'll get into that section a little bit later. Uh, staffing requests are in here as well, and you can also see, you know, some of the other uh. Projects that we're gonna be doing, uh, will be funded either through grants or sinking funds. Or debt service, or, you know, contributions from other municipalities, uh, some of the townships. Some of the highlights, these are the items that are in the capital improvement budget, um, which will be voting on separately. And you can see, you know, the big ticket items are typically the road replacements, um, there's several items in there that involve. Uh, Riverbank and um, pedestrian bridge down by Man Park, some of these uh, amounts are gonna be offset by grant money. Um, as we go through, we can talk a little bit more about that if you'd like, but this is just kind of the breakdown of the big ticket items here. Next slide is, these are the staffing requests that we had that we did not include into the budget, and you can see they're from a variety of departments. And, you know, we'll continue to monitor and look for efficiencies in order to, you know, help through um, some of the challenges, obviously, this year, especially in the Clerk's Department. With having multiple elections, um, really made things challenging, we had the census. Um, next year, there's only two elections, I believe, so it won't be quite as bad. Uh, we had a request for another officer with the uncertainty in the SRO, it kind of puts that request in limbo. And you can see, you know, the library had a couple of requests, um, some of the positions we're looking from making part-time to full-time. So we'll continue to monitor and look for some efficiencies in these different departments in order to, you know, the work still needs to get done. Whether we can hire additional staffing or not, so we'll, we'll continue to work on that. This kind of condenses everything that's in our operating budget, so you can see in our revenues, you know, most of it does come from uh, taxes, which we'll see on the chart. And then uh, some from fees and other revenues and then our expenses, their expenses are typically our, you know, wages is our biggest one and our salary and benefits are all in there. And then you can see where we had the contingency here, and then the transfers for the Opera House and the library, and then we take some of the uh, operating. Revenues and we put them into our capital outlay to fund some of the smaller projects, so we don't have to borrow for them. And this kind of breaks it down in the pie chart form, so it's easier to read, and you can see that seventy percent, seventy-two percent of our revenue comes in through our property taxes. And believe it or not, our licensing and permits and fines and penalties only come out to one percent each. So in the grand scheme of things, you know, those are low revenues for us, and then there's a couple of other ones that we, we collect along the way in order to. Um, accumulate all the revenue that we need for our budget. This is kind of a summary of all the things we talked about earlier, as far as our revenue that we were able to collect, and net new construction is obviously the biggest one. Um, and then we had, uh, you know, negative on the debt service, um. Which we can talk about when we get to that, or Jamin can answer that if you need information on that, the revenue from the TIF termination. And then some of the shared revenues and donations and, and other items that we get into the budget. This is our expenses, as I mentioned earlier, our biggest one are wages and benefits, um, is that, you know, half of our budget is that. And then, you know, we can see another big one is our debt service, so we're always conscious of that, and we try to smooth that out the best that we can. We do have a good uh, rating with our Moody's on our debt service, but one of the things they pointed out is our level at that service. Um, so that's something we keep an eye on, we're certainly underneath our, our policy, so we're not in any danger of running over, but. Certainly that contributes to the, to the tax levy. And then these are expenses by classification, and you can see that, you know, most of the money that we invest is through public safety. And then, you know, or, I should say, our operating debt and our transfers and then public safety, and then, you know, the other areas. In our departments. And then this gives you a comparison to twenty twenty, so our non-labor expenses went up two point six percent, our wages and salaries are gonna go up around two percent. And our benefits are only going up one percent, even though our insurance went up, some of the electives that employees took lessened their costs in that area. And then our debt service did go down, and then our transfers did go up. And then here's some more history, basically, on our wage summary, and you can see what we've done in past years, and, you know, this year we're projecting. And, you know, this year, we're projecting a lower than usual increase in our wages. And then the same thing with benefits, our benefit costs were down. And then our dental is another one that we keep track of. So these are all things with the health insurance and benefits that Director Gillingham is constantly, you know, working on our providers to keep our costs down. With COVID this year, she was able to go back and and show them that, you know, there was huge savings because people, quite frankly, weren't able to go to the doctor as often as they might have under a normal year. So our expenses were down and therefore, you know, the insurance companies worked with us to to reduce our premium. The expect restraint program, I'm not even going to try to explain this to you. This is kind of a Jamin's thing. But basically, we get rewarded from the state for being a low spending municipality. And, you know, at some point, you know, we might not qualify for this money. But this is something that Jamin has been strategically taking some of the accounts where it's basically money in, money out, and really didn't have a an effect on the actual. But it did show his revenue. So in those areas, he was able to trim some of that revenue that really didn't result in anything more than money in, money out. So by doing that, we're still able to qualify for that. Otherwise, you know, we'd be looking at a deficit. And then really, this is our levy bottom line. And you can see that our mill rate is going to decrease from all the work that Jamin and his team put together and the approvals that came through the committee processes to get us to this point, which is always a good thing with the bill rate going down, property values. I think we're going to go up slightly. But certainly, you know, the taxpayers can expect a little bit less, at least on the cities portion of 2021. I think the school districts might be down a little bit as well. And I believe the county may be up a little bit, but they certainly have been a great supporter for us on COVID related and human service related items in our budget. So we certainly appreciate the support of the county. Those are mill rate history. And, you know, what we're trying to do is, you know, keep it either level or declining. And you can see it kind of peaked out in 2013, 14, and 15. A lot of that was attributed, you know, to the recession. And it's starting to, you know, go back down again to nearly where it was before the last recession. There's a lot of unknowns going forward or what's going to happen because of the COVID and and the economy right now. So this is something that, you know, we certainly will be monitoring. And that's really all I had. If anybody had any specific questions on this, I'm glad to answer them. I know I went over it pretty quickly, but most of you have already, you know, seen this multiple times. Are there any questions at this point?
I just have one statement if I could. Not a question. We, Sharon and I live on the river. And I intend to present an amendment to the budget. But but I wanted just, I, you know, I struggle to whether or not I, because I have a place on the river, whether or not I should be presenting amendments or voting on this issue. But in looking at my justification for being able to vote on this eventually is that I I'm concerned about the whitewater park and the dam removal primarily. Not not really concerned about the things related to my property on the river. So for that reason, for consultation with a number of people, I believe that even though I have property on the river, that may be affected. I I don't know how it's going to be affected. So I'm feeling ethically that I can both present amendments and also vote on the budget if if it's modified. So just just for everybody's information, I'm taking that position. And I would welcome anybody to be able to question my motives and ethics on this. But I believe I am able to vote on this.
So the first one we're gonna consider would be on the operating budget, which is the R166 2020. And I think the items that you're talking to Alder Person Borisma will be on the next one. Yeah. So I'm wondering if anybody has any questions specifically, you know, on the operations budget.
Tim, don't we have to open it up for a public hearing?
Yeah, we could do that. So if nobody has any questions, we'll go right into the public hearing. So we'll we'll close the regular meeting and open up to the public hearing. And I didn't really have anyone specifically signed up for it, other than those that I read at public comment. So if there is somebody that's on the call that would like to speak to the operating budget or the CIP or the utilities budget, certainly you could have three minutes to do so. All right, so I'm hearing none. So we'll we'll close the public hearing and reopen the regular council meeting. So we would have R166 of 2020 coming from the committee of the whole. So that would be Alder Person or President Hirsch.
Yes, this is R166 2020 authorizing and directing the proper city officials to adopt the 2021 City of Stoughton budget and ISO move.
Second.
Second.
All right, there's a motion and a second. Did you have any comments or anything, President Hirsch?
Well, through our committee of the whole, we did, you know, go through this through all the leadership and Jamin's great work and your great work. And the committee of the whole at that time did approve it for a vote of 12 to zero. But that doesn't mean that if there's other things that you've been thinking about in the last couple of weeks that you want to revisit or get clarification on, now's the time. I think Jamin is probably prepared for that. It's good to have a discussion if there's anything that you want clarification on.
I do have an item. Yeah, that that is that I will be voting against this, even though I voted for the on the committee of the whole for approval of the budget. In good conscience, I can't, I can't vote for approval of of this specific item because I do intend to present an amendment on the second part of this one. So for the CIP.
They're voted on separately. So we're gonna have three separate votes, I believe.
Right, but 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 my amendment will will have something to do with the with the second item, because that is, because the CIP is incorporated into the whole budget. So that's that's my position. So I won't be voting positive on this one.
Well, if that's the case, should we table this one for now and then do the CIP first and then come back to this one?
Sure, that'd be fine.
Well, I think we can do that, but I don't know how the CIP is related to this. Jamin, can you help me understand that?
If I could, Your Honor, a point of order that we do have this a motion has been made and a seconded. And I believe it needs to be either either tabled, as Regina has said, or we need to vote on it.
Though Greg, and that's kind of part of the discussion for first.
Yeah, I'm looking for clarification on whether or not, you know, the CIP has any relevance on this part of the budget.
Yeah, the the CIP, the five-year CIP that's being presented tonight does not have an impact on this particular budget. This is just the operating side of things. So I I think you can vote on them separately. The CIP isn't actually factored into into any of these numbers in this particular item.
So I guess, you know, here and now, I don't know if there's any really need to table this. This is, you know, that that's a separate item. And, you know, I thought I addressed that at the beginning, but certainly, you know, we have a motion on this. Does anybody else have any questions or comments on the operation portion of the budget? Okay, so here and none, I guess I would ask all that approved the operations budget, say aye. And any opposed? And not opposed, that motion does carry.
I I do abstain.
Okay.
You didn't ask whether or not there'd be extension, extension. I I'm not sure that the the CIP doesn't have at least very little, maybe maybe very little, but at least something to do with our full budget for 2021. I abstain.
Okay, so one extension, that motion does carry. The next one is R167 of 2020. This one came from the CIP committee, which is also President Hirsch.
So this is R167 2020 authorizing and directing the proper city officials to approve the City of Stoughton five-year 2021 through 2025 capital improvement plan. CIP and ISO move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Alder Person Johnson, President Reeves, or President Hirsch?
I think now is the time to come up with any discussion. Again, it's, I know I have an amendment that I would like to propose. And I obviously Sid has is gonna put one to.
All right, do you want to put yours forward first?
About the CIP weeks and things might need to be further clarified. So now is the time to get it clarified before we move forward. So I guess, you know, Sid, if you want to put yours, you know, amendment through first or not through, but, you know, at least tell us what you're thinking.
I'd rather put it through, Regina. Okay. We've had a lot of comments, both this session and last session, from the public on the the whitewater park and removal of the dam. I think we may, I think we need to take the lead from citizenry who both in the City of Stoughton and elsewhere in the townships have voiced their concerns about this. And I think we need more public hearings, more and more input. I I just, I just think that that we're at that juncture at this point. The, I I did summarize the fact that I think I can present, I can present this because I'm not so concerned about what happens with my portion of the river as it flows past our house, but more about the whole nature of the dam and removal and the and the whitewater park. Concerning the 2021 CIP budget, I I believe that that we are spending a lot of money on this project already. We, and so I would would move that we amend this budget to remove in their entirety item 13 from the top of the summary. And it's actually item 13 from the top, four from the bottom. Remove entirely 92,931, which which comes from two addition, two numbers, 26, 648 plus, I believe, 66,283. So remove that completely from this budget. Also, that's that's listed as a dam removal whitewater engineering. Item 11 from the top or six from the bottom, $100,000, $100,000 for the whitewater dam removal, restoration, or remediation. And finally, item 14, which adds up to 89,976, which is contained 14 from the top and three from the bottom. The total amount of what I'm recommending that or I'm moving actually to remove from the budget for the CIP for 21 is 282,907. I think this is, this is a lot of money that that we we are spending on an engineering study to move forward with something that I am critically against both dam removal and the whitewater park. If there are additional items specific to this project, and there may be, because these only include the ones that are 75,000 and above, that I I would, you know, I would love to love to hear about those items too, that may be less than 75,000. But, you know, my my main concern is a 282,907 for a an engineering, a series of engineering studies, which would address this issue, which I am really opposed to at this point for the City of Stoughton.
I think I heard a motion there. Was there a second?
I'll second.
A second by Alder Hunt. Okay, and Holly, did you catch all that?
Yes.
Okay, could you, are you able to repeat it so everybody understands what the amendment is?
Sure, so there was a motion to remove 282,907 from the CIP, which includes the whitewater dam removal, restoration, and remediation, the dam removal and whitewater engineering, and the whitewater trails engineering, I believe, right from the CIP.
Is that what you had, Sid? Was those three?
That was, yeah, that was said in the end. I said there was, there might be ancillary because additions to that, but I'm I'm mostly concerned about this. So that's all I can really adjust tonight is 282,907. And I just outlined which ones they were. And Holly was absolutely right in specifying what those are.
Okay, so I'll open it up for any other Alders for questions or comments.
I don't know if you guys can hear me.
Yes.
My other computer was having problems and you guys were all muffled. I'm obviously going to be highly against this amendment. We have been working very, very hard on creating this whitewater park that is, it's going to have so many benefits to our river, to our downtown, to connecting our trails. It's what we've been hearing from our constituents that they're very excited about it. We have put a lot of work into it. We have met. And unlike what people have been saying, you know, Dan, our director Glenn has been meeting and working with groups for the last three years. I mean, he has gone above and beyond, meeting with residents from Pleasant Springs, going to Pleasant Springs, you know, you know, council meetings, meeting with people individually, going to conservation group meetings, going to so many meetings to, you know, inform people. We've been having a steering committee for the last three years. We have invited guests. So anybody who thinks that we haven't looked at other whitewater parks or other had experts from the DNR, you know, the county, I mean, you name it. We have done our due diligence for this project. And after three years of working on it, we're just now getting pushback, which is interesting. Seeing how we've been very transparent with our website, with posting all our studies, posting all our slides, posting, you know, you know, people that have questions, answers to questions. So you know, we are creating this park that's not only gonna clean up our water, it's gonna restore fishing habitats. The fish are gonna be able to move up and downstream like they should be. clean up our water, it's gonna restore fishing habitats, the fish are gonna be able to move up and downstream like they should be. Uh, it's gonna create more wildlife habitat along the stream banks. Right now, according to all our studies, it's not gonna affect the Bay Area. So I I really encourage you guys to really think about what Sid is actually proposing that here, you know, for how many years Alder Person Borzma has says that, oh, we need more single family homes, we need to encourage, you know, single, you know, young families to come to our community, we need, you know, a more vibrant downtown. This Whitewater Park checks all that. We're gonna create a an item that puts us on the map that's gonna make people want to come to Stoughton and spend money and live here. So I highly encourage you guys to actually support this instead of trying to cut it off right as we're about to get it going, so that's what I have to say.
Any other questions or comments?
If I could, your mayor, your honor.
Sure, go ahead.
Okay, I'm going to, I'm going to vote no on this amendment. I am in full support of this. For all of the reasons that President Hirsch has said. I also asked Mark to give us, give me the question, what questions did they want answered? And so I, that was the email that came out from Dan. Dan answered, spent a lot of time and answered all of the questions that they had. I think he did a very good job with that. As far as transparency is concerned, I don't, you know, that's just, that's just false, like Regina was saying, it's it's just, it makes no sense. We've been, we've had meeting after meeting after meeting. I agree with her on that. The other thing you got to remember is that that this, this, what you see right now is not natural. That's not what nature gave us. That's that's when Luke Stoughton came to Stoughton, who came to this area and created the city. It was just a river, a trickle of a river. What we have now is is because of the dam. Of the bay was not a bay, it was wetland, and it's become a bay because of that dam. It, all of the arguments seem to be two things. One is aesthetics. And the others, people just don't like change. You know, I I, we need this to help improve our downtown. To help improve the area that we we voted as as a blighted area, you know, what, eight, ten years ago? This needs to change. We need to move forward, and I'm in in full favor of moving this forward and and continuing the studies to make sure that we get it done and get it done right.
I had a comment if I could.
Sure, go ahead.
Um, so I I would not be in favor of removing the funding. For those of us, you know, I I'm hearing a lot of environmental concerns, but for those of you who know me, I'm very much an environmentalist. But I'm also data driven. There's an overwhelming body of evidence that manmade dams harm the environment and contribute to climate change. So I'm I'm not disregarding the questions about sediment and the need for, you know, remediation and and making sure we do it right. I think we all have a lot of questions, which is why we need some of the engineering studies. But removing the funds without having all the information and data would be short sighted, so I I would not be in favor of removing the funds.
Okay, anybody else have any questions or comments? And Director Glenn is here too, if you have anything for him.
Excuse me.
Uh, go ahead, Alder Person Hunt.
I recognize that quite a series of meetings have taken place and that no one has intentionally obscured anything. But I feel like much of the community is just becoming aware of the plan to remove the dam and include the Whitewater Park. And I guess my question is about urgency and what's the impetus, what's the need to act immediately? And it seems to me if the project has merit, then it can withstand further scrutiny and further conversation. And I think it would be best if we allowed not just our city residents, but our neighbors downstream and our neighbors upstream to have a fuller opportunity to have input. And in the meantime, we could take the several hundred thousand dollars and, you know, communicate, gather more information, maybe do more studying. Some people resist, but I think it's a good idea to lower the water level to the operation level that we would obtain when we started using the Whitewater Park if it were installed. So we could reassure everyone not with theoretical studies, but with actual eyewitness information. And then we could have the support of the townships and we could have the support of our community. And if that meant a one year delay before we started spending two hundred thousand dollars or so, I would certainly think that that would be a reasonable decision.
Mayor, can I speak?
Uh, sure, just make sure you speak to the chair. Go ahead.
Okay, this is Regina. Yes, I I guess I you know, I'm listening, you know, you know, when people say that people are just becoming aware that it's a very interesting thing, because we've had two or three public hearings that were so well attended, you know, one was at the Opera House, that was a number of hundreds of people there. And the second was was just last January, where we had it at the high school, where we had another number of hundred or so more people there. It's been in the hub for three years. And respect to our neighbors north and south, they've been invited to our steering committee meetings, they've attended with the same questions that you're hearing repeatedly at our meetings here, and we have answered them, we have brought in experts to answer their questions. Dunkirk, you know, we've called them at the very beginning of the project, they, we were trying to have a combination project with them, and they were not interested at that time, but they're all for it. They're hoping that we can somehow, only concern they have is possibly trash floating down their way and, you know, we will address that if that ever happens. They're also looking at, you know, possibly putting other takeout sites down there, so we have done a lot, and with respect to drawing down the river to the level. Um, you got to remember that through one of our studies, the sediment study, is that in the milk pond is actually has a lot of contaminated sediment. If you draw it down and you're not capping it at the time, you're actually releasing some of those toxins downstream. Now, talk about not being a good neighbor. That wouldn't be really nice for Dunkirk to do that. Um, and so we've also spent a lot of time designing this whitewater park to have absolute minimal effect upstream. We're at the 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 top limit that the DNR would allow us to build it to, you know, hold back you know, some part of the the water. So there is minimal impact when the dam is out, so to say that we haven't done anything or have not thought of things is really doing a disservice to the steering committee that's made up of not only myself, but Matt Dragney and downtown, you know, business owners and Dane County and just a slew of other people is is just and plus we have a website that has lots of all our information. It's very transparent. So I guess I'm really concerned that, you know, we have done our due diligence. Dan has written and obtained so many grants for this. You know, so I I just it boggles my mind, I guess, that want to delay this when we are wanting to have something that's in a great humanity to bring people downtown to coincide with our riverfront redevelopment. I mean, our developer there is really excited about this opportunity. If we pull this out, I don't know what's gonna happen to that developer. So, you know, there's a lot playing on this. And to like kick it down, the so-called the can down the stream again, I I think we're gonna have more problems with the city and trying to get a new you know, redevelopment developer, and we're trying to help our local businesses with bringing in people. Now you're talking about COVID and you want our businesses to thrive, well, kicking it down for another year or two, that's gonna be on you.
Any other Alders that haven't spoken on this topic wish to offer questions or comments?
This is Jean, and I sort of have a a comment and then a rhetorical question I I believe I want to ask, and that is being newer to council now, you know, getting into a little over a year and a half on council. I knew about the Whitewater Project prior to coming to office, but I have spent lots of time reading and paying attention to the emails that come our way, and I too was a bit surprised about people claiming their information was different, different sides. They weren't aware or why it was coming so much now. And so I'm paying attention to that. In all of the reading I've done it, the the science and the details and the impact that that this will have on our city has been very clear to me. And so I'm asking the question, why is it difficult for some folks? And I think that perhaps all of the work that the that the Whitewater Commission has done, I think depending upon how we vote tonight, we need to throw some support your way. I'm not sure why difficulties are happening with communication right now. It could be COVID like, it could be near the end. It could be the way people are treating this issue, but I think that for those of us, depending upon how we vote, I guess I'd just like to ask the question, I'm not certain why all of that uncertainty or those questions or misinformation or whatever that is, is happening now. So that is the question I'm asking, and I'm not sure if we found the right ways to communicate that. But I do want to say that depending upon how I vote, I would try to offer and explain to my constituents who would contact me why I voted how I did and how I balance the information. Thank you for wanting to respond. I just wanted to get that last part in. I'm not certain why, why, why this is happening, but what do you guys think? What's been in that?
I'll offer my two cents worth, and basically, I think what you have is there's there's some sentimental attachment to the dam, which is understandable. It's been there for many years. You know, we love our our old buildings and our historic features that we have in Stoughton. That dam really, the dam itself is not historic in nature, it's not eligible for any historic designation, but it's been there a long time. So I think that's part of it. Some people like the aesthetics of the dam. And quite frankly, I think the other big reason is there's some unknowns. And we're still doing our due diligence to get our final design, so we can understand exactly what the answers are to those unknown questions, you know, and and really get more information on the water levels, especially. And let's face it, change is hard. You know, we've all had to adapt, you know, to COVID and other things in our daily lives, and it hasn't been easy. And it's a really stressful time period, and and this issue does add to that stress for folks, because there is, you know, some uncertainty about the future. And I think what what Dan has tried to do in the steering committee and the park and rec committee is really to just go through and do their diligence. As Regina mentioned, they've been at this for, you know, well over three years now. This isn't something that's been rushed into. They've been taking it a step at a time. There was a lot to learn along the way. You know, there's really not that many communities in Stoughton that had even had this kind of a conversation. So this is new territory for for all of us. So I think you you kind of put all that together, and it does create some angst, and I think that's perfectly normal and understandable.
Well, your honor, I'd like to address just a couple of those things that were said, you know, why, why is this happening right now? There's petition over over five hundred signatures of people against this. So just so you know, there there have been no less than about fifteen people who have presented a council who 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 are against this. We have a, we have a a lot of concerns by a lot of people, both upstream and downstream. There was a, there was a major fight on a on a dam removal for in the town of Dunkirk. In the town of Pleasant Springs, there was a vote, which was unanimous against it, sending us a message, a clear message, that the the town of Pleasant Springs is totally against this. And and I had heard for a number of people, from a number of people, actually even on council, that everybody knows about this and everybody's for it. That is simply not true. There are a lot of people who are really, really concerned about this. And again, I rushing into this, when we have so many people who are against it, I think it's just putting us, you know, in a in a really bad spot. I I just, I just am spending, spending money that could could give us probably three more police officers or three more staff.
Alder, Alder Borzma?
Yeah.
I I I would like to just, a point of order respectfully, I I I don't believe that I'm getting a sense from the question that I asked, the the why now, I you're, I'm hearing your arguments, but I'm I'm really not, not.
Why now? Why now is that we have, we have one of them, just one why now is we had a vote from the town of town of Pleasant Springs totally against this plan. Okay, that's one. And I and I said some other stuff too, but that's, that's a lot. That's a township that's really concerned about this whole thing, because they're they're concerned about their bay. Okay, so that's all I need to say about that. If you want me to limit it to that, I will do that, Jean, but you know, there there are, there are other people in this, in this area affected by this and concerned about it. So the bay is really an important consideration, the everything all the way from here to to, you know, to Ganza's Park is is potentially gonna be affected. So, okay, I'm done.
Thank you.
So I think the other thing you have to look at is, you know, the DNR supports the project. Dane County supports the project. These are all experts in wildlife and water management. And I don't think that they would be encouraging us to remove the dam and go forward with our project if they thought it was going to be detrimental. And, you know, at some point, you have to trust the experts. And we have to do what's what's best for the greater good of the city of Stoughton residents, and those are difficult conversations to have. And, you know, what I would encourage you is to continue to get educated, because there's going to be more decisions to make on this as we move forward, whether this amendment goes through or not. And if there's anything that you need from us, you know, just let us know. You know, Dan has worked very hard, as Regina mentioned, to answer all the questions. You know, I think there's certainly some validity issues with the petition. I'm gonna just put that out there. I've looked at the names, I've I'm going to just put that out there. I've looked at the names. I've gone through it. Um, it's, the numbers are distorted. Um, and that's just how it is. And, you know, certainly some of the concerns that they raised, if I lived in the township, I would be concerned about that as well. But as a public official, before I went on record, I'd be darn sure I had all the facts. And I think that's what you guys are trying to do. And we're not rushing into this. This has been a multi-year process. We're still not there. Um, so, you know, for the suggest that we're trying to rush something through is, is really disingenuous in my opinion. So, um, that's all I have on the topic. Does anybody else that hasn't spoke to this issue have any questions or comments?
Um, I had one question for Director Glenn. Um, we've had uh, rumblings about a uh, presentation that the engineers are uh, putting together about the uh, hydraulics upstream. Um, I'm wondering if there's any update on that?
Sure. So we, we got feedback from several members of the steering committee and Dean County officials. And the feedback was given to the engineers and we're editing the video. This is not completed yet.
Okay. Um, I hope, I hope that's something that can um, dispel a lot of the misinformation that has been floating around and recirculating, honestly. Um, I, I heard several points tonight that have been um, addressed several times uh, in the course of these council meetings, our parks and rec meetings. And I'm sure the, the Whitewater meetings uh, as well. Um, I will be, I'll reiterate many of the points that uh, have come up before and I'm going to be uh, voting against this amendment.
One thing I will add in is that, uh, I mean, it would be a great idea to, to try the, the drawdown to water levels to see what the impact would be. The hard part to that is all of your upstream lakes and rivers and reservoirs are pretty much at historic levels. So I don't even think you're going to get a realistic drawdown on the river, even if you tried.
Uh, Brett, just to let you know, you know, we've looked into that. You need certain permits for that. And again, um, you know, I think the fear of the drawdown, it was when we fixed our dam, I think nine or 10 years ago. And when we drew the dam down also, Lake Ganso Dam was also kind of closed. And so it gave this um, kind of inflated response of what happens when our dam was, you know, drawdown. It was, it's because the other dam was not, you know, releasing water too. So, you know, that bay area obviously got drier because it wasn't receiving the water like it usually does from the first dam. So I think that's where a lot of this fear is coming from, is from that one, you know, instance 10 years ago, which obviously was pretty traumatic for people living in the bay area. Um, so the other thing I want to say is that, you know, we're gonna getting more studies in and I'm, you know, I've talked to Director Glenn and other council members. Once we have, you know, this new information in, I will call a committee of the whole and we will go through for everybody that's on this council, all the data that we have, you know, all the studies. So everybody is on that same page because, you know, I realize that we have new council members that have come in and, you know, may not have been aware of different things. And I do want us to be totally transparent and well-informed. And so that, you know, if you do have constituents coming up to you, you can direct them to the correct studies. You can talk smartly about them instead of um, reacting emotionally or via hearsay. So I, I'd rather us build our strength in knowledge as opposed to misinformation. So we, you know, stay tuned. That meeting will probably be coming up, you know, maybe before the holidays, maybe not. We'll see if we get all the other information together.
Excuse me, Your Honor?
Uh, sure, go ahead.
Um, I'm not really certain why the um, a large segment of the community did not get uh, familiarized or were unaware of meetings that have been had. But it's apparent to me that a lot of people are just becoming aware of it. And if the studies and the opinions of experts are what we will ultimately rely on, I feel like everyone should be made privy to that information. And maybe more uh, attention will be paid now because everyone's become aware of it. So that, I don't see any uh,
Looks like you froze up.
Uh, yeah, Fred, just to go on that, uh, the Whitewater Park has its own website that has all this information there. So it's been totally transparent for years. So all they have to do is go to the city website and go to Park and Rec.
All right. We'll see if Fred can get back on here. I think he locked up and needs reboot and maybe.
Yeah, we did bring a terrible havoc on internet tonight.
Am I back or no?
Yep, you're back.
Oh, good. No, I just see, think that a lot of people see a huge risk. I mean, you take the dam out and the dam is gone. And then how do we deal with uh, maybe uh, some very small stream going through town or the bay disappears? I mean, we need to reassure people and get, gain their support. Uh, I don't see any need to be impatient at this point. I think we should uh, stay the course if that's what we want to do. But I don't see uh, how we're doing everyone, the service we're capable of doing if we don't inform people and give them a chance to have their questions answered. And if that means uh, not spending 300,000 until we're ready to be certain that the community supports it, then I still would be against spending 300,000 until everyone's had a chance to uh, uh, familiarize themselves.
Mayor?
Uh, go ahead, Alder Mieski.
Call the question, please.
Okay, does anybody else have a comment? Otherwise, we can call the, the question.
I, I would like to, if I may, I would like to just say one thing. Um, just very briefly is that uh, following on what Regina said about uh, people recalling back from 2009, I believe it was, when the dam repairs were taking place. Um, I think some people have like a, a residual memory or fear thinking that the dam is going to go away and there will be nothing impeding water and there will be a trickle of water flowing through Stoughton. And that is very, that is nowhere near uh, reality of what is being proposed here. Um, so people that are operating on that basis um, need to go and look at the information regarding what's being pre, obviously would not make a water park work if you don't have any water. And just in the last couple of days, I've actually had people asking me just in passing, um, while staying at least six feet apart, wearing a mask. Um, what's going on with the water park? Because that's going to be a really great thing for Stoughton. So I, I am not in favor of this amendment.
All right. So we do have an amendment on the table. Um, are there any questions about the actual amendment? Does everybody understand where we're at? Okay, so all in favor of the amendment, say aye.
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 And those opposed?
Aye.
No.
No.
Okay, did I hear two or three ayes, I think I heard, and I think the no's have it.
I'd like a, like a, a vote.
We can do a roll call. Holly will call the roll.
Borzma?
Aye.
Caravelo?
No.
Hume?
No.
Haley?
No.
Hirsch?
Nope.
Hunt?
Aye.
Denton?
Nope.
Lagaki?
No.
Mieski?
No.
Reeves?
No.
Schumacher?
No.
Cosby?
No.
I'm motion sales on a vote of two to nine, or two to 10.
All right. Thank you. Are there any other amendments?
Uh, yes, I'd like to make an amendment on the item, I can't pull it up right now. On the police, with respect to gas masks. I know we had a discussion that um, when the, the budget was coming through and we, and the more I thought about it, I, I really am not comfortable. And this time to budget 10 gas masks for $10,000. So I guess I would like to reduce that to, you know, for safety reasons, down to three. So I'd like to eliminate seven of the gas masks and only have three for a savings of $7,000. And that's my amendment.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Haley. Okay. Anything else you want to add? Uh, President Hirsch?
Um, I just think in this climate, it's just really sending a, a difficult message to our community. Um, I, I wouldn't, you know, yes, if we have a obscure, you know, spill, you know, we, we are still covered with that because we'll still have some. But um, I really don't like the um, the idea of uh, you know, using tear gas on our, our protesters. And I really don't think that that's something that we should be funding through or I guess being um, okay with that behavior. So I guess that's my main reason.
I had a question.
Sure, go ahead.
If, if Chief Black is here, I was thinking the City of Stoughton Police Department does not use tear gra, tear gas. I'm wondering if I could get some clarification on that. See on?
Yeah, that is correct. We, we do not have tear gas. We've never used tear gas here. We do have pepper spray. Um, that is the substance that we use here. Um, I think it's, it's a, it, it's incorrect to look at these as being offensive in nature. The gas masks are nothing more than personal protective equipment designed for multitudes of things. Um, if we think that this is the last pandemic or other exposure that our officers are going to be in risk of over the, the next few years, I think we're sadly mistaken. I think that the environment is going to get worse. Um, gas masks are not new to the City of Stoughton. The department had them in the late eighties, or I'm sorry, the late nineties when they uh, got them through a military surplus of program with the state. Uh, and because of the requirements that the state put on there about uh, testing and inventory and things like that, they decided to give them back at that time. Um, but we do not look at these as being uh, offensive in any nature at all. We look at these, these as totally personal protective equipment, not unlike a bullet resistant vest. I mean, we issue them to the officers to keep them safe. We hope they never have a need to use them. It's the same way with the gas mask. But um, I'm telling you that because of the pandemic, more so than anything, is what prompted us to really take a good look at this and to say that this is the equipment that officers should have to keep them safe. Um, and they shouldn't be looked at as being an offensive item.
So with that said, that's a different answer than what you gave before. Um, with respect, I didn't think that you use gas masks to um, deal with citizens with respect to the pandemic. What you said prior was that if the riots in Madison and your officers were called to assist in that, they needed this equipment in case there was whatever pepper spray or gas that was released. Or if there was a kind of toxic spill. So saying that this is protective equipment for a pandemic, that's, that's news.
Well, we did talk about this, uh, a, a protective equipment. Uh, that was even brought up by Alder Schumacher, who had indicated that he uses a, a um, gas mask routinely in his job. And because of the other aspects of this, yes, the first indication that we used was uh, that if our officers get called to another jurisdictions where there's substance being used, I, I don't want them to be ill-equipped. Um, and having gas masks prevents them from being exposed to toxic chemicals or to um, gas or anything else that may be present. Uh, again, to, I, I, I guess, you know, I, I, I don't understand where this becomes offensive in nature. I'm not asking for tear gas canisters and, and things like that to be used on the public. I'm just asking for personal protective equipment for the officer.
Could I, could I respond to?
I think Ben had a question.
Hi, Ben.
Um, yes, I was the one who brought this up uh, first since CIP. Um, and I'm in favor of the amendment. Uh, I'll add that, uh, Chief, your, your primary, um, your primary reasoning that you gave be- before I brought up my concern um, was about the protests. Um, and there, there are legitimate personal protective concerns with um, being exposed to chemicals from fires and, and such. Um, that, that you did bring up afterwards. Uh, but that the, the initial reasoning that you did give was um, primarily uh, because of the increased uh, protests this year. And I, I felt and still do feel that it, it does send the wrong message at this time.
I had Alder, Chris and Borzma.
Okay, so uh, I don't know how many of you have had gas masks and you utilize them. Um, I think probably Greg and I, as uh, military people, uh, maybe the only ones who uh, had a, had to use them. Um, if you don't have a gas mask and you're subjected to some, certain kinds of chemicals which are in our communities, um, you, you, you can't understand how debilitating uh, gas of a whole bunch of different types is to a human body. It's, it's incredibly debilitating. So I think we need, I think we need to support our police department with this uh, this request because I think that uh, that they need to do their job and they need protective equipment like they need all kinds of other protective equipment. If you, if you had to go through a uh, a subjection to, to um, gas uh, and you, and you could just get a feel for that, um, you would be voting for this uh, the proposal for the additional gas masks.
Uh, I'm saying, just to make it clear, I'm not getting rid of all of them. I'm, I just don't think that we need 10.
Each of the, each of the people, if they go out on a, on some kind of mission, which we are very fortunate in our city not to have had, uh, you know, uh, some kind of chemical issues in our city. Uh, every one of those officers that go on one of those situations should have uh, the right to have protective equipment. Uh, and, and again, if you wanted, if you wanted a demonstration of how debilitating gases to an individual, it just stops you cold. Uh, and uh, and if you were in military, you would have known it. And you would be voting for the additional of these gas masks, I'm sure, Regina.
So I'll support what, what Chief was saying. I mean, I, I do use these fairly routinely. I only view them as, as a piece of safety equipment. And they are absolutely necessary when, when you need them to protect you from a variety of things. Um, even reducing the number of them, well, that's sort of, then that reduces only the number of officers that you can send out on that sort, on that type of call. Because all of these, uh, the masks have to be fit tested. On that sort, on that type of call because all of these, uh, the masks have to be fit tested, so it's not like. Something that you can just share back and forth between people plus. You know, that's, that's some pretty close physical contact on your face too, I don't necessarily know that I would want to share. A mask with pretty much anybody, uh, other than my, my very own, so. Um, I look at these as just another piece of safety equipment. I completely, I, I sympathize with the social connotation that they've acquired over the time, but. Um. When, when they're not intended for offensive use, then. Um, then we have to put the social connotation of it aside and, and look at it purely as a piece of safety equipment.
Uh, I saw the chief put in the chat that the budget request for, was for nineteen masks and not ten, so we might have to. Um, get a revision to the, the language of what you put forward Regina.
Okay, because I, I thought I looked on the budget before and it said ten for ten thousand dollars. And I can't pull up the budget right now, so. My computer is kind of locking up.
Mayor, the chief.
Uh, go, go ahead, Oliver Kristen Johnson.
Yeah, I was just, uh, the chief had something, uh, and then I'd like to say something.
Sure. The request is for nineteen, um, that would equip the, um, the rest of the officers that are not on the. Crowd control unit, um, and I apologize if it came off as that. The riots were the only thing that these would be used for, uh, that wasn't my intent, it's just, that's what highlighted it. Very quickly to me when I saw what was going on and the fact that it was there, there was a great. Uh, possibility that we had uh, to send more officers than just the officers that were involved in our crowd control unit. In Madison, and that just triggered the thought process and that's what I wrote in the budget request as the main catalyst, but it's not really the main catalyst. The main catalyst is all the other things that these can be needed for, um, just think of the. If you go back to even to nine eleven, on how many police officers would have been saved a um. Lifetime of, of the remaining lifetime of cancer and everything else had they been provided. Uh, enough gas mask before they entered the, the twin towers, uh, we can go to even right here in town, we have. But, you know, chemical company that deals with multiple chemicals, um, we've had investigations where officers have needed to. Um, borrow um, other equipment from other, you know, entities in the city, it, it, these are not like the. Breathing apparatus that firefighters use to enter buildings, I mean, not to that level, but it's the same general principle. That these are protective, uh, personal protective equipment.
Alright, any other questions or comments, otherwise we do have an amendment on the table, okay? Oliver Kristen Johnson.
Yeah, just, just quick, I, I wanted to thank uh, Oliver Person Schumacher for what he was saying there, I, I would agree with him. Uh, completely that, that, you know, I, I, I'm sympathetic to the social issues that are going on, but I also am sympathetic to. Our, our police officers, uh, that they deserve to have as good equipment as we can afford to give them. Uh, I see this as a protective piece of equipment as, as Oliver Schumacher was saying. Uh, I would not want our officers to have to go into a situation where they were not given the proper protection. Uh, I mean, I wouldn't want to do that, uh, having been in the Coast Guard. Uh, we, we were and, and in engine room, uh, we were, uh. We were given gas masks simply because of the, the potential for toxic uh, exposure. Never had to use one, unfor- fortunately, I should say, uh, but it, it's something that. It, it was there and I was happy to have it with me and I, I do not want to deprive our police officers of something that can. Help to protect them and save a life.
Alright, so. We have an amendment on the table and so is the amendment is to reduce it down to three, is that what I understand?
Yeah, because I thought it was a total of ten, because I guess I didn't realize it, I guess on the budget doesn't say how many. There are, what's in the pack at this time.
Okay, alright, well, we'll vote on the amendment, we'll see what happens, um, all in favor of the amendment, say aye.
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 And those opposed to the amendment?
No.
No.
I believe the noes have it. So are there any other amendments? Here and none, that would take us back to the original um. Resolution as presented and so we'll go ahead and take a vote on that. All in favor of the uh, CIP uh, resolution as presented, say aye.
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 And any opposed?
No.
And there's one opposed, so that motion does carry. And that will take us to the third piece of the budget and that would be a resolution from Stoughton Utilities. And that would also. Went to the committee of the whole, so President Hirsch, did you want to introduce this one?
Sure, I'm trying to find it, um. So, R one sixty-eight twenty twenty, authorizing and directing the proper city officials to approve. The Stoughton Utility twenty twenty-one budget and five year. Capital improvement plan from twenty twenty-one through twenty twenty-five, an ISO move.
Second.
Alright, I think it was a tie, I'll let Holly take her pick, um, Oliver Person Hirsch?
Um, again, this one came through our committee of the whole. And we approved it twelve to zero, it also went through the utilities committee and was approved seven to zero. Um. Good budget, I don't know if uh, Director. Voice says anything that she wants to add at this time.
I don't, but if I can, I insert any questions that anyone may have.
Anybody have any questions about the utility budget? Alright, here are none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And, and you opposed? None oppose, that motion carries, I believe that was everything. Motion in a second, uh, all in favor of adjournment, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries.
Alright, thank you.
Good night.
Good night, everybody.
Alright.